So my question.
Is there any reason we have to resubmit proposals in your opinion?
No, I mean, no one has seen, I guess. So they've come up with the same thing. I mean.
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're, they just. Realtor, the, put the proposal together may have not had the blessing from the owner of the realty company. For that big of reduction. Of course, we weren't, we weren't, we weren't, we asked for proposal. We didn't ask for lowest bid. We could have accepted the one that was most expensive, but we so desired. But I do know one of the reasons that one chosen home source was chosen because they were substantially less than. Anybody else. I believe Sun Realty, I believe was five percent. Remax is the other, yeah, Remax is the other one and they had various costs we spent, what level the service they provided.
So none of them were apples, stapples anywhere.
No, not, not.
All of them said six percent at the initial, then home source said. If we keep it in-house, the buyer and seller, we will go for three percent. Remax said they have a six percent package, a seven percent package. So it depends on how much advertising and stuff like that. And some was.
I believe some was five percent.
I would say it's safe to say if you put it back out, then. Still consider the same. Realtor, if it's not. You know, if they're still underbidding, you see what I'm saying? It's, you're creating an issue at that point because the, this Realtor, if they're coming back and saying, oh, wait a second. We can't do it now, but we're still going to undercut the other two Realtors enough to possibly sway this decision. Kind of defeats the whole process of putting it out there in the first place. So I guess my suggestion, either you don't take their bid at this point or put it back out there for everybody to get a chance to do it again.
Well, if we don't take our bid, we can accept one of the other bids.
I would say so.
I'd say we get the thing off the sale, in my opinion. While it's hot, who the heck knows what's gonna happen? All the stuff going on across the world, everything else, I mean, market could crash or if you can't stay under two years, but if it crashes, we're not getting anywhere anyways.
So the suggestion would be to reject their, reject, reject their, their bid. And, and choose from one of the other two.
Yeah, or put it back out so everybody gets a chan- chance, because I mean, at this point, they're, they gotta see everybody else's bid.
Yeah.
Then come back and try to correct it and still come in on, it's, you're, you're creating, it creates an unfair advantage. That's my, my opinion on that.
I guess this is. And this, this, and, and our, our bid wasn't cost, our bid wasn't cost driven and all the, I guess the, the. But the cost was the deciding factor because we felt all three were well qualified. I don't see any outside. Who know that offering us any extra services or anything else that was, was not requested in the bid. Yeah, I, I hate to delay this, you know, much, much longer by going through another. Process again. Also, I don't know.
Yeah, so the way, way I see it working is. So you put the bid out there, they made the offer and now. They decided to change that offer. So it's not, not even really valid at this point, what the bid is and they have an unfair advantage now. So.
Sure.
I think you're obligated to either put it back out for bid or. Or to choose the other two.
Would it be fair to contact the other two? And ask them if they were, were willing to go to this, say, four percent? Before we, if one of them said, no, I'm not interested in going four percent, the other one said, yes, I am, then that would create a. More of a justification, put it out there, but if neither one of them said they were interested in going. Then could we accept home source at that point?
Go to negotiation.
I mean, you're essentially at that point putting it back, you're still back out there at the same.
Yeah, I mean, you're gonna redo the whole thing, you're gonna do that.
Yeah.
But if we can reject, reject, we can't, could reject home source. And go to the next bidder. Because basically the, what they, what was offered to us. See, I can't sign a contract because I was authorized to sign a contract with him, but it was a three percent.
Yeah.
Now, that was what, that's what I was authorized, signed the contract. So when I was told it's going to be different, I said, why I have to bring it in front of the council? And. And we would have the council have to vote on it. So that's, that's what I'm doing here.
I say just move on to the next bid. That's my opinion. I don't think we should wait and put it all out there again and. What do you think, Bob? It feels like a bait and switch. This is where you're getting away. Pull it out.
Yeah. Again. Okay, first off. I will ask for a motion, I'll ask for a motion. To approve. Home sources. To prove, to give the mayor the authorization to sign the contract as presented from home source. The revised contract. I think we. Get me wrong, we need to do something to reject it.
Yeah, exactly.
So, okay, correct, if we're gonna do it.
Yeah, you.
So.
Need to get on the record that.
So, so the contract presented to me. My God, must fault her, they didn't bring that with me here. But the contractors presented to me was, I believe it was four percent part, it could have been three percent, five percent, but I do know sure it was five percent. On somebody else came in, they felt they need, need that, you know, to get, get somebody else interested. So I need the motion to approve the contract as presented to me by home source, which is different than the original. Original quote on what was given.
I move, we. Reject. Get that. We invalidate home sources, original contract of three percent fees. And allow the mayor to negotiate a new contract. At four percent, if it's kept in-house, five percent, if an outside party comes in, a second party comes in.
if an outside party comes in, a second party comes in.
It's been moved, is, is there a second?
Is that negate, that, that would negate us from accepting one of these other guys for tonight?
No, no.
No?
Well, I said, yes, it would, because I said, we're sending home sources, four percent.
So, so if he moves it, no one's seconding it.
It's dead.
There's, that is dead. Yeah, so don't second it.
And also, you know, if you want to, do whatever your mind tells you to do.
No, I was just trying to get a clear statement.
Yeah, it's, one more time, I'll ask for a second. If there's not a second, the motion fails. Continuing on Realtor for town property. Can I have, want to discuss it first, or you wanna make a motion, get into discussion, or we can just sort of kick run? The, the two, or do we need to, the, do you like more, or, or to brick, come, bring up the exact numbers? What meeting was that, Chris?
August twenty-fourth. I can pull it out if you want.
Yeah. Make sure, make sure. That memory. Me correct, yeah. I'm remembering the numbers right.
Terms on the other ones.
Okay.
I wanna say they're both six percent.
Do you think they were?
Both of them were.
Okay, I was thinking home source was five, maybe not.
Oh, the other two, I mean.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I think it's unrealty, it was five percent, but I might be wrong. Yeah.
The Sun Realty, six percent, had a house. Five percent of the.
Let me see if I got my notes real fast.
What, what date was that?
August twenty-fourth.
You know, I thought about it, I was there, I don't have my notes with me, so.
Yeah.
You what?
You don't have to go far to find the cop.
All there was tickets.
Tickets, lots of them, right?
Sometimes.
It did pretty busy.
Starting to be.
Well, I offered Joey my tickets to the senior center fundraiser, for forty dollars a piece, that's what we were talking about.
Mine are a little bit more expensive. Mine are a little bit more expensive.
I don't have my notes readily available.
Home source being five percent.
It's no Sun Realty.
I mean, Sun Realty, sorry.
In fact, it may have been five and six, it may have been six, if six, it was outsourced, and five in-house.
Yeah, it was six percent.
Yeah. That is, yeah, that makes sense to, I believe.
If that is the case, I promise you.
That wouldn't do. That would put Sun Realty a little less expensive than Remax, and that's kind of what I remembered.
Yes. Remax was expensive.
You know, and, yeah. But the council liked to give me some guidelines on trying to negotiate, going to the next, next loss bidder, if it's, it's five and six, or. You know, there's nothing said, we gotta go full bitter either, I'm just, just saying, that's what we did last time.
I'm trying to figure out the next bidder, you know, next one up, I just wanna get listed.
Yeah, I do, I think we need to get listed relatively soon. I agree. Do you want me to? That's a. Preference, have you got a preference of either what, regardless of price, either one of the companies?
No, I suppose, whoever you ask, I think that's where you'll need to, because they could be equally willing to change their price as well, go up a percent.
Right.
Just like the other one, so I guess if you've got your guidelines and sign. I guess we pick a number, if they'll do it for five percent, six percent, great, if they won't, then.
We'll just ask if they honor, if they'll honor what they proposed. More so, but I mean, don't get in negotiations, just ask them on what they propose. Because this isn't a, we're not, we weren't, this is just for services, we're, we're not bound by going to the, with the least expensive to the town, we're looking for, for services, we just felt that we're, at the time, that they were all qualified, and so we went with the one that had the best proposal, cost-wise. It was, how, how we, that's, that's how we discussed it at the time, that they were all equally qualified, and one was significantly less.
They can make the motion on taking the next loss bidder. Your main.
Author, would you authorize the mayor to go ahead and do that and sign a contract?
Yeah, that's what I'm motioning.
Right.
How about we present realty?
I, I love memory certain, but man, if I'm wrong on that, I'll correct it, but that's, that's my, that's the way I remember.
Either, or, I mean, I don't care which one is out of the two.
Okay.
Because they probably have ninety days, is that, for the typical Realtor receives, a, a big exclusive? Then after that, if we don't, if we wanna change things, you can.
Well, depends on how long you sign your agreement. You know, they'll try to get you to sign a year agreement, you know what I'm saying? Uh, that's typically, but this, they're, to get this hour and put some big signs up and stuff like that, the advertisers properly, they're gonna have a little outlay of money. And I guess that was why Sun Realty came back, they were minimizing, but they're in the business, not me, and everyone made the bid. Yeah, so I told my, consent contract. So, we, we got a motion, do I have a second motion by councilman Weaver, to get the mayor authorization to negotiate a contract with a, with one of the two Realtors that originally submitted one, which would be Sun Realty and Remax? Second. Been moved, second by Councilman Demick, any further discussion? None being, pardon? Uh, Councilman Weaver made a motion. Councilman Demick, second, any further discussion?
Do we need to officially withdraw from Sun Realty for their negotiations? Have that as motion as well?
We voted not to accept it already. I. I, I think that's what our legal.
Yeah, so, yeah, you had, without a bid, you gave you a price, you maybe offered to them to sign the contract, they came back with a counter offer. You make a counter offer, you're rejecting the initial offer that the town had made, so you just rejected their counter offer, so there's no more.
So, probably the best thing to do is just go to the next, try to go to the next, instead, instead of getting a negotiation.
Yep.
And, and that's same with this, I'm gonna look at their bids, and.
Just take the next loss one?
Yeah. Any further discussion? None being all, favor say, I, given the mayor authorization, negotiated a real contract for selling town property, with one of the two Realtors that left it, or initially put in a bid? All favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, pose. Thank you all, all in affirmative. New business, Shoney Chamber Commerce, Wind River Visitors Council. Let me lead, lead out with this. I, I do not feel that Shoney Chamber Commerce has been doing a real good job as, in working with the town, as she shown me, and working for the betterment, she shown me, we're on the same page. We're not on scene on many things, as mayor, I personally have very difficult times communicating with them. One thing that recently came up, that she shown me Chamber Commerce, helping to sponsor the one-shot rabbit hunt in Riverton. In Riverton, not Shoney, we're not supporting Shoney businesses. So, one of the things I would like to see changed, I, I believe, the TAD, that what is referred to as the TAD money, and that typically is about six thousand dollars a year, uh, that's been going through the Chamber of Commerce. I would like to have that money directed to, to the town, instead of the Chamber Commerce, and that's something we can do with the Wind River Visitors Council. I would like our economic board to be our sounding board for what to do with that TAD money. That TAD money is generally is towards advertisement for the, for local businesses here, in Shoney, for the betterment of businesses here in town. And good for the businesses, town is good for the town, as she shown. You know, I would, I would like to re- request a motion that would give me author, give us authorization to any way to, I'm also on the Wind River Visitors Council, that we would direct Wind River Visitors Council to, to send the TAD funding, whatever that may be, every year, to the, to the town, as she shown. And it's not a lot of money, but I got a feeling that our economic board possibly might do a better, will do a better job allocating the funds for that. That is, that is one motion, I got another one. I'd also like to ask, I, I don't know how to word this, I'd like to ask if she's only Chamber of Commerce to change their name. I don't feel they represent the town, as she shown.
Yeah.
If you got a question, please come, introduce yourself.
Sorry, sorry, my name is Butch, and I'm an outsider, but.
Is Butch, what's your last name, please?
Rich, R I C H.
Butch Rich, thank you.
So, I'm not familiar with your setup here, but I've never been in this city, or a town, where the Chamber of Commerce has a direct political association with city council. They've always been separate entities, and neither one controls the other. So to me, it would be outlandish to ask them to change their name as a city. In, in my mind, that, that would be some overstep, but maybe Shoney has a different organization set up. But the Chamber of Commerce has always just been a group of business people that have come together with a mindset that they wanna do something for their own town. I mean, Thermopolis, Thermopolis is set up that way.
Ag- agree, agree.
So I, I could, I mean, I could move into any town in America that doesn't have a Chamber of Commerce, and all by myself, I could set up, you know, Bo Diddley Town Chamber of Commerce, without the constraints of the city, so that, that would be my.
But there is nothing to prevent me to ask them to change their name.
Exactly, yeah, you could do, you could do a request.
Yeah, no, we, we, we cannot force them to change their name, but I can sure ask them.
So. Yeah, I would, I legally, you can ask them, ethically, I wonder where that would stand. Can I, can I make one back step also? I'd raised my hand earlier, and I wasn't sure if you accept a comment during the middle of your meeting, because some towns don't, once you've started.
We're, we're relatively liberal here, go ahead.
Just back to the real estate, I don't know what piece of property you're looking at listing, or if you have one in particular. My experience in the world of real estate through the last fifty years is Cadillac plans are always better than Walmart plans. And if you're listing something for fifty thousand, the one percent's pocket change compared to the service you're gonna get. And I'm not familiar. And I'm not familiar with your town layout. If you have a three million dollar piece, obviously one percent is a lot of money. But you know, the bait and switch. I was raised in Jackson, Wyoming. Where, you know, the whole realtor thing has just gone crazy now. I mean, I left some time ago. But um the bang you get for your buck for the extra percent is generally well paid for. You know, in a higher sales price and better services. That was my comment on on, but I don't know what piece of land you're looking at selling or if it's just a general idea of what might be available. So just my, you know, my.
But if you're getting a Cadillac, you're getting the same service for less.
That's if you are. But that shopping at Walmart versus shopping at Kohl's.
Yeah.
You know, one one's more.
A bought sold quite a bit of land.
So. But idea.
Okay.
Thank you for your comments.
You bet.
May I speak?
Introduce yourself.
Okay, I'm Wanda Wise. I'm acting vice president of the chamber right now. And as far as the money for the Wyoming Rabbit Hunt. It has been brought up. It's been an argument. The monies from Riverton needed to be put in prior to the date. And the rabbit hunt folks did not know their deadline. They decided to move this year from Shoshone to Riverton to see if they could get more people involved. It was brought to the Shoshone Wyoming Chamber of Commerce. And it was discussed have them go to Riverton and ask for money. We spoke to the people in Riverton. They said they didn't have any money. I went to the last Wind River Visitors Council meeting. I spoke with Helen. I said, is there any legalities about this? They missed the deadline for any funding out of Riverton. What can we do to assist a function that started in the town of Shoshone? And has run through the town of Shoshone for many, many years. And last year they had difficulty getting into the building. They were unhappy. So they said, we'll try going to Riverton. I asked, is there any legalities with the Wind River Visitors Council money coming to Shoshone and us paying the receipts that the wind that the Wyoming one shot rabbit hunt turns in? I was told that that was tad money. It comes to the county and any function in the county. We could choose to to do one in land or as far as the Wind River Visitors Council people have their says system set up at this time. That's what I was told. I was also told that by the Riverton director that they were in hopes that they could convince them to come back to Shoshone. Because it's a Shoshone function and that's the way it's been. We agree this year, the rabbit hunt has been a big pain in everybody's neck because we have to keep everybody happy, which you know what happens when you try to do that. But I went to the to the Wind River Visitors Council meeting. I talked to Helen and I was told that as long as it's a function in Fremont County, they are not gonna have problems with the tad monies. So for those of you that are not part of the Wind River Visitors Council, please either trust my words or call Helen at the Wind River Visitors Council and speak with her.
I'm not worried about the legalities. Helen came to me with this issue. And she said, what should we do? But but anyway, what I'm getting, what I what I am getting your funding a a event in Riverton. Keep the money in Shoshone. Why should if they're gonna move a move from Shoshone, why should we reward them and continue to fund them?
We we decided at the meeting that we would never do it again if they're going to stay in Riverton because they'll never miss the deadline again because they'll be in their cycle.
Why are they? They decided to move for for planning on their part because they missed a deadline. Does not turn into an emergency on our part. They missed a deadline. That is not your fault. It's not my fault. But it's also, I'm very upset that you would even consider funding something out of town that it's been here. What they was this their forty third year, forty third event and I'd have been involved in the chamber. You want our money, you need to hold it here. Plain, 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 plain and simple. And I'm not faulting them for removing. I guess they may have their reasons. But I am faulting the chamber for for funding that. And that's 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 what I'm that's what I'm.
Alright, um, you can you can fault us, but we did ask the Wind River Visitors Council.
Sure. And the funding does come through the the town as she shown me. If so, decide we can we can distribute that funding where we think it'll do the most good.
Leah Delay and I am the secretary of the chamber now. I've been a part of the chamber for quite a while. Um, in one way or another and dealing with the tad money, it was not easy to make that decision because it was a very heated discussion and if Mr. Highsmith as a representative to the Wyoming Visitor Council would have come to the chamber meetings and has filled us in like he we believe that he should have been doing. As part of the chamber filling us in, but like Wanda said, um, there was a heated discussion about that. And the vote was taken after much consideration and after talking with Helen at Wyoming Visitors Council. The other thing is is we're really wanting to push on having them come back to Shoshone because they're recognized. The five shot rabbit hunt is recognized as a Shoshone event. So we are working with the Riverton Chamber of Commerce and trying to bring us back to Shoshone. The reason why they wanted to go to Riverton was try to get more people involved. And since it was on a Fremont County event, we were permitted to do that. We were willing to help them, but that did not stop any of our funds being separated or from any of the other organization like Chris Conjice. Wanting us to, he and Jordan showed up. And we we are granting them money to help with their summer events. That money has been divided divided out to the best possible way. So no one is shorted. And because we had extra funds, we were able to, we are going to be able to give out two more thousand dollars than what we normally have to help functions in Shoshone. Now back to the five shot rabbit hunt. We're wanting to bring them back. The reason why they did not want to be here is because they had problems with the building over there plus getting people to come here. And we all know that we'd love to have a really nice motel here so that people can come. But but they have a lot of people that um they were hoping to get a better response with women coming in for the five shot rabbit hunt over in Riverton because it's a bigger area. We don't believe that that was the best thing. We still don't. And we're hoping to work with the Shoshone Rec Department to bring them back. But taking the funds away from the chambers management I think is a big mistake. The chamber is is not a government facility. You can the the town of the government of Shoshone cannot manage the businesses of Shoshone and the aspect of a chamber. And I think it's a very big mistake for for you, Mr. Highsmith, to even be considering that, especially when you don't even come to the meetings. And I I I think that you're you're just out to cause more problems. Which we have been trying to repair. We invited all of you guys to come down to the meet and greet. None of you showed up. Not wanted. We got a lot of good response from the Wyoming visitor Visitors Council down there with Helen and with the Riverton Chamber of Commerce and hopes of with the other chambers. We are doing the best that we can. And we look forward to doing more and improving more. And we do want to have some reconciliation going on here. We would love for you to come to the meetings. But if you don't feel comfortable in coming to the meetings.
I I I've been to multiple meetings.
I have been to more meetings than you have in the last two years since I've been on the board.
I had people tell me that they were pretty new to the chamber and they walked away from the chamber because they felt like they were isolated.
You want to know why two people left? I can tell you why. They wanted to hold two events. One of them was a baseball tournament here in Shoshone Days. All five, six of us were previously committed to events on Shoshone Days. They wanted to run a bit of a baseball tournament. And also they wanted to run a bit down on their property for a um kind of like the best of the band. We gave them every possible information that we can. We even volunteered to help pay for the insurance. Get them underneath our umbrella. But they wanted us to end up taking over it. We didn't have the time as the board because we were all previously committed throughout that whole day.
Yeah, I have no idea.
That's why, that's why two of them left, the couple left. Because we were not able to be there holding their hands, going through every step with them. We we gave them all the information we could. We gave them all the help that we could. But we could not give them the time, our time, and that's what they wanted.
Yeah, that that very well could be excited to ask them.
That's the situation there because when you are such a small group and you guys all know that. You know, when you're so busy and you're dividing yourself out and you don't have a spare hour to give those people to run their battle of the bands or the battle of the bars or whatever they were planning on doing at baseball field and knowing full well that the baseball field field several years ago had gotten changed to where it was more little league. Space in between the bases. So all that would have to be redone. When they started finding out all the work, they started blaming the chamber. Well, it wasn't the chamber. We gave them everything that we had ever, all the knowledge and we were gonna put them underneath our insurance umbrella to help them. And they said, you guys aren't helpful. Come walk down. So there's underlying things and you and you know that.
That's what I said. I don't I didn't hear their reasons.
So please, please come to us, just like you want us to come to you guys. Please come to us first.
Well, like this first time I heard this months ago and I haven't even said it to anybody. It's just I figured.
With the couple is just, it's just really hard that they didn't understand that it's not a chamber event. Chamber, the chamber event is to make sure the cha- what the chamber does is help advertising. The chamber is not in the business of holding events. They're not an event planner.
And then I guess.
You can ask any chamber and that was my my thought was when I first got on to the chamber with, no, they have to help with events. They have to put on these events. No, what a chamber does is help the businesses with advertising and promoting whatever they're doing.
Yeah, well, like I said, when it comes to those two, I know there's two sides to every story, so I'm good on that. My other question would be is instead of, like I said, I I have a a hard time with this rabbit deal and us putting our money in Riverton myself. Well, I think why didn't we put money into the ice derby? I mean, the ice derby is a huge deal. That's local. They come in here, buy supplies here at the gas station and everything else and yet.
Well, the other.
They didn't get a nickel.
Right, I'll tell you. Then if it's not, if if we can't support an activity in Fremont County, granted, they left Shoshone to Riverton. The chamber, we cannot help out there at the marina with the fireworks and and fishing dirty because they're not inside Shoshone. If we're gonna play this game then we can't, we can't help any of our businesses that are members of the chambers that are not here in this town.
The the money is for the town as she showing up. Businesses. That's that's the that's the spirit of it. It's for the she showing me Chamber Commerce should should be supporting she showing business.
Okay, so then Chris Conjay and Jordan's activities down here at the town plaza.
If it's bringing people into Shoshone that will spend money at Fastlane, will spend money at Fastlane, which is a business, will spend money as Lucky Five, which is a business.
But that's not a business.
Lucky Five is.
Local.
Their activity is not a business. You're contradicting yourself.
No, I'm not. It will, that that activity will bring business into the community and you're the Chamber of Commerce.
How many?
Started the the fiddle hunt, the rabbit hunt, the she the the deer hunt. The snow deal they used to have, the Chamber of Commerce.
The Chamber of Commerce used to be outstanding.
Yes, they did.
I know. My mother was a part of it.
So was my father.
And they they were outstanding in the things, but they had more people involved and more people that were more service oriented at that time.
But 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 still.
But we do not have that any longer. And I don't want to argue.
Just this shortness we he you spent, you see, you sent, spent money to our, you put money, you put money into an event that's that's not benefiting any of the any of the businesses in town.
But you don't have, you never had all the facts and you never came and talked to us. You never came to the chamber and talked to us about it. Did you?
Nope.
Did you?
Did I need to?
Yes.
Yes.
Why?
Because.
Just get up here and speak. We're gonna cut this about another minute and it's gone.
Well, you know, and here's the other thing, Joel. I don't think that's fair. You didn't come when Scott was the president to none of the meetings. He was there. He, all of us made that decision. We talked to Scott. Scott said, that's not illegal. If you would have come and said, you can't do that or come to the meeting, you weren't at that meeting and you were in.
Meetings was when Scott been present? Yes, I have.
But you weren't once or twice, but you weren't at that meeting when we had that discussion. You didn't come and tell us to me, you should be there every month.
Did Mayor Peter, did the President of the Chamber Peters say that was illegal for the town of Shoshone to be part of the Chamber of Commerce because we wanted to be part and work together?
It's not legal for you to do that. You're a governing body, so you cannot govern. The town of Thermop is not a member of their.
Many chambers, municipalities or or parts of chambers commerce. I've checked around. Anyway, we'll get, we're getting off center.
Well, I I I disagree and I think that's really unfair.
Okay. Thank you. Goodbye. Wanda, you've already had your three minutes. Pat? Pat, you're next.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm Pat Collins. You said you're on the Visitors Council?
Yes, I am.
Are you the president, vice president, secretary, treasurer?
Yes, I am.
What are you?
Treasure.
Treasure. Okay. So I think you got a conflict here. I think you're asking these people here to more or less go on your word is what the council over there said. I think if that you should have somebody from the Visitors Council coming up.
No, I'm check. Go ahead.
Quit interrupting me. You should have somebody from that council come over and make their speech over here rather than you taking both sides of the picture here.
I'm not taking both sides picture. I am speaking. I brought this up as the mayor. The town of Shoshone. We can decide to re- to remove the Chamber of Commerce from receiving tad money funds, just as the city, the town of Duvois did recently.
If the if the council over there. the council over there is the ones dividing up the money, why do you have the right to cut it off and say it's your money?
No, the the town of Shoshone, the town, the si- the six thousand dollars tad money or whatever comes in is allocated through the town of Shoshone and the town of Shoshone is designated to Chamber of Commerce to be the recipient of that money. What I asked to have that revoked and and the money no, no longer be given to the Chamber of Commerce. And where my plans is that let our economic development uh committee deal with the, with the tad money. Because I villain that the Chamber of Commerce is not been well by by sending the six, sending, sending money on a Riverton event. I do not think that's in the spirit of saying this spirit of the thing is supposed to support the town of Shoshone. Whenever Visitors Council is a countywide, but the funding that we have left there to the town of Shoshone should be for the benefit of Shoshone businesses.
So does the council give City of Riverton that tad money?
That mean that that does whenever Visitors Council? Yeah, Riverton gets a lot of money. So does Duvois, so does Du, so so does Lander. Shoshone and Hudson gets just small pieces.
Does the council give Riverton City the money to distribute it or does it go through their chamber? Or does it go through the Eagles Club or the Health Club?
I I don't know who distributes some money for Riverton. In in Duvois, it's not the Chamber of Commerce because they were the governing body there at the time felt that they were mismanaging funds and.
Okay, one other thing. I agree, I don't like the idea of the deer hunt going to Riverton, Duvois or anywhere else. However, if you stop and look at it, everything that Shoshone Chamber has ever started here wound up well like Phil Constance, they went to Thromop.
Yeah.
And it went to Castor, they couldn't. So what it boils down to is people like these people sitting right here, the volunteers that are actually trying to do something to help promote Shoshone. I don't really see any business people or their representatives. Excuse me, a lot of our leaders are business persons, but I don't see them people in there trying to run the chamber or do anything else. So I'm just saying that it's bad thing if they do go to Riverton, but they didn't get no support from here other than the chamber people. So.
And they made the decision to leave and that's, that's up to them.
It's like I said to you already that they're trying to get them back.
But I yeah, well, discussion is that money spent for Riverton event. Leah, can you come up and speak here one more?
Just because the rabbit hunt was held in Sh- held over in Riverton. The actual hunting parties, the groups did not stay in Riverton. They were all over. One of the others.
They only had three.
Exactly. They're struggling so badly. And one of the things that um the young gal had said when they asked about the tad money and we hadn't said yes at the time was they were looking at doing a virtual. Yes. My, exactly. And what it is, is they would have the Calcutta thing, you know, and and all that, all the activities that they do in the, in the one room. But the groups would be satelliting from all over the state and hunting. Well, how are you going to be able to manage all that? There are a lot of concerns, but we want to keep the door open to the group that volunteered to put this on to come back. And like I said, it was not an easy decision, but when Helen at the Wyoming Visitor Center said it's a Fremont County event, you give them, you can give them the money. If she would have said, don't give them the money, we wouldn't have given them the money like we have in the past. But we want them back. We want to have a good rapport and by the comments here tonight, you're causing more division among all of us. Let's heal some of this stuff, Joel. Don't divide it anymore. Don't take part in that.
Would you please take some of your advice? I haven't seen you at any of the city sponsored events. Many people have not that.
Well.
So, but anyway.
I'd like to ask a question to the number.
Yes.
Do you know, has this Riverton Chamber of Commerce equally helped any Shoshone events? Like whether, what I'm wondering is there's some back scratching in a positive way. Has the city of Riverton helped drive people here to the race, to the races or to the summer nights or?
That that's something that we're trying to work on right now with with all the chambers in Fremont County is we're wanting to come together and help promote one another's activities. And the more you keep it, you know, each group, we put it, we're going to be putting it on, on the website, on Facebook. We're going to be trying to do that for all of them, calendars, events for the whole county because people come through Shoshone. They may, they don't stop and stay usually, but they come through. So we are working on bringing all the chambers together without being one chamber but being individual and supporting one of them, one another.
You mentioned problems with the building. I'm completely unaware of those problems. Have you thought about how to solve those problems?
Well, I think Michelle, um Michelle Ramble is going to be looking into that and 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 really asking them to come down to the rec building down there instead of over here at the community room. Fire hall.
So the problem was access to the building or times for or did you give you more details?
Um, they, they did not give me any more detail. Maybe they gave Wanda some more detail on that. Yeah. But that, that's one thing that we're, we're hearing from a lot of our members is when they use the facility over here that they're having to clean it beforehand. And um Jennifer Channel with the, with the um farmer's market has been one of the ones that have have complained also about that and has talked to you about it.
It's already been addressed.
Yeah, and and like I said, have talked to you about it. So.
Okay, those are things that.
Yeah.
Help clarify these situations here.
One thing I I will say that that's a positive about Shoshone is that the fact that we have several buildings where people from out of town will come and use the facilities because it costs too much to rent facilities or use facilities because sometimes you have to have insurance that you can't pay for. And um to use like the the Fremont Center or the Reach Building, they're looking more and more towards using some of the facilities over here in Shoshone. Senior Center, the Fire Hall Community Room, the Rec Building. Um, so we are working on this and it's going to take some time.
Okay, let's move on.
And I I do appreciate all of you listening. You may not all agree with me. That's fine. I don't always agree with you. I do support this community. Granted, I don't go to all the functions because I am busy with two jobs. Plus, I'm a grandparent and I have a lot of activities that I go to, so I'm out of town a lot. Thank you.
Still, nothing's changed. They, money was spent on an event that was in Riverton. I'm just disappointed that our chamber would would do that with the small amount of money we get and the large amount of money Riverton get.
Which is Riverton get? Do you have any idea?
No, and I should know that too. Hold on.
Sorry, I didn't hear what you said. Oh, I was just asking if you knew how much Riverton got. It's quite more than Riverton, Lander, Duvois get the majority of whatever comes, it comes from the state.
Wait. I guess. Closer a hundred thousand dollars or eighty thousand. Something like that.
What's her number?
Six. But that's based on based on that money comes from uh hotel tax. We don't have any. So we get a stipend and so does Hudson. And Hudson gets four, we get six typically. It has been that way for several years. Actually, Riverton, Lander and Duvois are all relatively close in the amount they get.
Did Riverton give any money towards it?
It was after the cutoff.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry.
Yeah. And if anybody would like to see where our, where the town money went, I have a copy of the paper where the tad, tad money went this year. And I'd be more than willing to share it.
Okay.
I have no problem with it. I would like to see you guys table this and at least come to the chamber.
And I. And you know, and I I would like to also say that the, the, they, they, the Chamber of Commerce really takes no extra input on anything else on outside comments on for tad money. Any outside ideas or I brought up an idea in the past that somebody else did on how things could be done. But anyway, I'm just very disappointed they would even consider spending money like that. I, I think our economic development could do a much better, do a much better job.
Well, few years ago, I know we had that committee on trying to get things going for Shoshone with a whole bunch of ideas and I was at a meeting and I tell you what, I just, I didn't get, it was like I said what I said, you guys said two words and it was over.
I, I wasn't.
No, I know. I'm, I'm just saying that's, that's been my experience because I joined just for that. That's some exciting, we had some exciting ideas. They had a group of people kind of with different ideas and every single thing that we threw out was shot down, everything before it even could even take off. And it shouldn't. Ed, no, that's a fact. There was a lot of people involved.
Oh, I'm sure it was. And and if I remember correctly, back to not enough hands, not enough people to take care of what we've got. I mean, and I'm not trying to drag this out, but I've been to town events.
Joey, if you're going to speak, come up here. Let's get this, this will be the last call. We're going to move.
I've been to several town events. I'm not trying to point fingers, but I have not seen you at Shoshone Days for dinner that I can recall.
No, it's been a couple of years.
Okay.
Had COVID.
That's, that's fine. Joel, I haven't seen you down at Shoshone Day supper or breakfast. I haven't seen, I might have seen Chris.
Have your eyes open.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. I'm just, I'm just saying that I haven't seen.
One year and they said, no one's seen me and I was in the parade.
So, but you know, I don't. That's the flywheeler. That has nothing to do with us, but it does. All I'm saying is, is you want us to support you guys? We would like the same back from you. And in the, the amount of money that we have is small, I'm not saying, but we also when you look at our group, there's only six or eight of us. We are putting on the dinner. We're trying to help them. That's fine. I'm just telling you.
There, there again, I, my, I still ask for, for motion on the tad money that uh that we remove the Chamber Commerce as a designated and uh have the tad money given instead to the, the town and I'm like to suggest that we are, are Economic Development Committee take the responsibility of, of working with businesses in town to help betterment of businesses in town. Can I, can I have a motion for that? Can I have a motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
Can I have a second? Can I have a second? One more time, can I have a second? Move it's Shoney Chamber Commerce from receiving the data money. None being motion fail. Second quarter financial update. Try and talk a lot enough for this mask. It's really thick, so I apologize if it's hard to hear. So I don't counsel a chance to look over some of the numbers, but our total revenues versus budget predictions for the first half of the year combined is certain at forty nine point four percent. We still have a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars in our AR accounts for reimbursement. And our overall balance increased to another three thousand dollars during the second quarter. A couple of things of note is our biggest liabilities as far as unfulfilling our predictions was mineral and severance tax. So we'll see how that goes in the second quarter or second half of the year. But most of our other revenue streams are well above fifty percent. Our police, the second quarter is the lowest by far that we ever receive citations, obviously with uh November, December and holiday traffic. We don't uh have that, but we are overall sitting at forty nine point four percent overall for the town. As far as some of our expenses goes, we're currently under budget. I did combine the payroll discretionary. I apologize this week. I didn't have time to break it all out into like utilities. But our total payroll is at forty seven percent of budget and our discretionary spending is at forty six. You can also see how each department is so far trending throughout the year. But the biggest thing I want to talk about was the enterprise funds. Uh currently our year today for the water department is fifty nine percent of our budget revenues and our expenditures are at forty seven percent. And our wastewater is at forty nine and forty five respectively. That does not take into account the depreciation fund that we have budgeted in that will come out at the end of the year. But what I'm seeing right now is our wastewater is going to come in right at what we budgeted, which is after the small increase we did last year was to be expected. And our water so far has performed where we will should be able to have a profit minus depreciation funding at the end of the year. Um, I'm predicting probably somewhere around five thousand dollars above the depreciation, which would actually put a solvent for the first time since I can go back on the water. I do expect our overall revenues for the year to be about a hundred and five to a hundred and seven percent of budget at the end of the second half of the year. Any questions, the council? Or anything to clarify? These all be on our website if you want to review them further too. Thank you. C ordinance. Thirteen dash tree, sidewalk, tree, ice and snow, dirt, etc. This was something that's been coming up the last couple of weeks, um, so. Our current ordinance thirteen dash three states that all persons shall keep the sidewalks in front of and adjacent to the premises occupied by them clear of ice, dirt, rubbish. Or other refuse and after any snow shall cause the snow to be immediately removed from such sidewalk. It's been hit and miss, I did get with Buddy. And we did come up with a plan, what this does say is that occupied structures, not landowners. And I was looking into it, so. The town is picking up some of the routes that are currently sidewalks next to unoccupied houses or properties that are vacant with no housing on them. Which goes down Pine Street as well as Idaho. And some on Sixth Street and some of the other sidewalks around the community. That's the current, that's the current ordinance. Enforcement, I, I guess is for debate, but that's, that's what our ordinance states. Um, I know a lot of the comments that I've heard is I didn't want the sidewalk there. Well, you know, it's there. And these, the sidewalks were put for kids to walk to school. And. You know. If the orders need to be changed, then change it, but right now that's what it says.
None of the sidewalks work for the school, there's no kids down where any of the sidewalks are at. Because we had a city council that changed it all around and made it wrong.
I, yep, I'm just going off your, this was stated. But I can't, I don't have the power to change it or modify it, I just, that's just what it says.
You know, it says, uh, remove immediately, how are people gonna do that if they're at work?
Well, I mean, yeah, obviously it's.
Yeah, they should have a time and some.
Yeah, no, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying that as soon as it snows, it must be obviously verbatim immediately, but. But that's what it says, yeah, I didn't write it, that's, that's.
May I approach?
Go ahead, please.
Um, when the, when, um. They had the meeting, we were there at the meeting at the community hall when Kyle was giving the presentation before they gave the.
Not the second time.
Yes.
No, I wasn't.
The second time you weren't there?
No. Can't apply that.
Well, anyway, in that town, in that meeting. And Joel was that there, Joel, you had mentioned that and Kyle had mentioned that the town would take responsibility or. The school would share in that responsibility. So that that was gonna not that ordinance was not going to be enforced on the residents, even the property owners, those that wanted to shovel their snow. Off the sidewalks. They would be doing that, but in that meeting, Mr. Highsmith. And Kyle both said that the ta- the school and the town would take. Over that responsibility of all the sidewalks being taken care of.
So, I, I'd like to respond to that.
Uh, you said it, here's another witness right here.
I definitely do not re- remember that conversation at all. I do remember you saying that. Between you and the engineer, you guys said it. Now I got a question here too. Is. If I heard him right, Chris right. That if. Joe Blow owns some property here and he lives out of state. He's not liable for cleaning his sidewalk?
If there, if it's. The way the current ordinance is. If, if, if. If the property is occupied, whoever's occupying the property, if it's, if you have a renter renting a piece of your property. The, the, it says the occupant is responsible for snow removal, not the landlord. With the house is vacant.
That's what I was saying.
That's what he's saying. We couldn't hear you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I know, so I, I got with Buddy and down Pine Street. Um, all the way to the school and the school is going to make sure that they plow the sidewalks of California. Um, and then there's a gap in Pine Street where there's no residences between third and about halfway up Fifth Street. And the town has been also. Buddy's gonna also make sure that's plowed. Um, there's some else down Sixth Street, there's also some places down there. And then, um, he's got a route, unfortunately he's not here, but it's, he marked him, we marked him out of all the unoccupied premises. I'm just going by what the ordinance says. I wasn't there at that meeting that took place, I have no idea. Personally, I would live in Wyoming most of my life, um, I've. Grew up in Rock Springs and Casper and I just shove the sidewalks in the driveway, I used to go around the shovel and the sidewalk. Or the shovel sidewalks to make money, I don't understand why this is such a big issue, but it is, and so that's why I asked for. Mayor to let me talk about it a little bit to see what we can do about it, but that's what it says. And.
I did, I've got a snow pile on my ranger. And I didn't wanna have snow pile on that. But. When we had this last snow, I did do out in front of my house and so I could see kids' footprints. So I did on front of my property. And I thought, well. If I do the rest of these people on this side of the street. And tear up something on their property, uh, inside their property.
Yep.
That's mine.
And the town actually had that happen last year.
Well. I don't think I want to be responsible for tearing up someone's property and just trying to be a nice guy.
And that's what happened to the town, actually, we tore up someone's property as well, their own equipment. By doing someone's in front of their house.
Just a sort of a neutral comment, um, and Mr.
Could you announce who's speaking again?
Oh, I'm sorry, good trip. I think. Mr. Keller can reference this in Thermopolis. They've been dealing with the issue, I, I personally believe it's just a civic responsibility, it's like paying taxes into the school system, oh, I don't have kids. Well, you benefit from. You know, education around you and. So I think if you own property, it's your civic responsibility to take care of the property. That legally has been determined your responsibility, even though you don't own it. But I think one thing they struggle with in Thermopolis is. Um, elderly people, handicapped people. So I'm assuming this is on the agenda because it's gonna be reworked. And I think, you know, that's something, it's sort of technical because in Thermopolis, are you aware of that? No.
Well, there's been, I, I'm aware of some of the issues here, I mean, where to put the snow after the show.
Yeah, um. Because I think in Thermopolis, if you're not able to. Then you put in a request to the city for an exemption, but it's pretty simple. And I know some places where I've lived, you know, I left the state for a few years. And in Spokane. They have these like snow Nazis. And if you push anything off your, your private property into the public domain, they find you immediately. Because it's, no, that's your snow, you put it in your grass. But it's, it's a major issue that the snow pile comes through at six o'clock for the school bus and by eight o'clock, the street's full of snow. Because everybody with an ATV cleans their driveway and packs it out and, you know, so it's just observations, but. You know, back to my, my first statement, I believe it's a civic responsibility to take care of your property, it's part of ownership and being a civilian in a free society. You know, mutual respect.
And I'm glad you brought, I didn't bring that up, I said like Buddy's not here, we kind of talked about that, but that was one of the things that I brought up in that. You have an elderly person that is handicapped or to the point that they just can't physically do it. You know, I, I think that's part of being a small town, we can, why, why would we not do that? So those are things that actually we're, we're gonna. Talk about and addressing how that would be facilitated, because that just makes sense. You know, but if you're, you got a twelve year old kid in the house. You know, or you're able bodied, I don't understand. Why that would be an issue, but.
Yeah, and it's, I, I struggle with it in my place, you know, this morning I was out at seven forty, I was able to do half my driveway. And then because of health limitations, I went inside for an hour, I came out, I do the other half of the driveway. And then within an hour I do my sidewalk. And I happen to live, you know, I'm blessed to live on a corner lot, so I have double sidewalk. But I just think it's my responsibility as long as I'm able and I'm not. I can't do it like I did when I was fifteen, because I could do the whole block in twenty minutes, but I still think there's some. It's part of being a good, a good civic.
Appreciate your call, thank you.
Thanks for letting me talk.
Any, any more on the sidewalks? Well, appointments. Few small changes from. From, from last year. Marshall Kellers are. Attorney. Go from the top, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem. Bo Weaver, uh. Central Bank and Trust, Town Depository, Central Bank and Trust, uh. Just Chris is this county. Why, Royal Star and Cheyenne, Vincent and Vincent, and any of your FDIC banks as needed. Uh, visual publication, Riverton Ranger and all other means advertising, Chief of Police Chris Kojai. Uh, Clerk Treasurer Chris Kojai, Director of Public Works Cecil Boyle. Marshall Keller, Attorney, Minnesota Judge Jack Hornaker, can I have a motion? To approve those.
I'll make the motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Been moved in second. Any further discussion? None being all in favor, say aye.
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 All say. Recreation Board, we have Ken Kundal. Kirsty Baker. Zoning Board. Joe Highsmith, Tammy Hartkey, Bob Zant. When your visitors council. Uh, my turn, I'm on that, my turn been until twenty three, so. Those two boards. Motion to prove Recreation Board, Ken Kundal, Kirsty Baker, zoning board, Joe Highsmith. Tammy Hartkey and Bob Zant. Can I have a motion to approve those?
So move.
So, motion by Councilman Zant, second.
One second.
Second by Councilman Weaver. Need further discussion? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both say. I would like to, I'm gonna appoint. General Administration, Bo Weaver. Uh, Police and Court, Joel Highsmith, Bo Weaver. He'd be on it, Bo Weaver. Maintenance. Uh, Department of Water, Wastewater, Streets, Parks, Airport, Mike Demick. Bombing Community Representative, Bombing Gas Representative, Bob Zant. Uh, Shoshone Rifle. Range Committee, Ken Kundal, Roger Baker, Julie Ballard, Bill Snap and Jessica Smith. On the Economic Development Committee is Mike Demick, Tammy Hartkey, Hartkey, Ken Kundal, Tim Davis and Brian Cooper. Take care of all the appointments. Department Head Reports, Town Clerk.
Uh, well, I just. Briefly just go over some things, um, so we've had. Four absences in the last weekend and a half due to COVID. Um, I'm just out of overabundance of caution, wearing a mask, um. So I am vaccinated, I don't have COVID, I have no symptoms, but. Um, I've been around some people in the last four days that have tested positive, so. Um. I say in the past two days, Friday, so it's day four. But, uh. I've had to man town hall pretty much by myself for a few days. All I would bring up is that, uh. Please bear with us with getting back to you on some things, there might be some slowdown and some responses. I do apologize, we're doing the best we can, but, uh, it's. After this week, uh, we just don't have. It's not just the town hall, you know. The police department was affected, every department in the city has been affected the last two weeks from COVID. So, um, just please bear with us, if you have a request. Um, most of you have my phone number, you can call me directly. Um, I will be in the office tomorrow, but I will be in my office by myself, so. Um, Melissa will be here later on and so town hall will still be open if you need anything, but, um. I will not be available tomorrow for in person. And I hope to be back Thursday, so. I was gonna be in there, but things weren't working for the meeting, so I kind of had to come out here. Um, that's all I have for my report today is just.
Any questions from the council?
Be safe.
No, now keep up the, keep up the good move. Roundtable, Bo, do you have anything on roundtable?
This week.
Tammy. No, Bob?
No.
I would like this, at least touch base on, on zoning. That and. I, I, we're gonna, I think we need to. Schedule. A work session. And I think we need to get together, I'd like to. Be able to do that next Tuesday. If people can, can make it. We need to look at zoning now. We're gonna, for one, the, the new forty acres that, that's getting planted, how we're gonna, how we're gonna zone that. And we should add, address, so what are we gonna do on the agriculture land further, further to the west? How we're gonna. How we're gonna zone that and look at other possible zoning issues. In the town, I, I think we need to look at our, at our zoning. As a whole. And take a, they, take a, take a look, look at this, this would just be a work session that were. The. The discussing. That in a public forum, everybody will be invited. And we'll probably zoom and everything else, but we won't be voting on anything, we're just gonna sort of kick around. And try to work up some things that we're, we're looking at, and then we'll probably. Mind for seeing us following up with some, some meetings in the, in the future, you know. Eventually change some ordinance and. And, and zoning and, and how we're gonna address. Dress water, the new. That new plant's gonna look like and, and others. You know, there's, we have, you know, many things that are, I think. Ordinance, not only zoning that are outdated, but that we have zoning coming up. Fast, we should, I believe that we need to look at. Maybe even get some advice from Marshall on some of this, look at some of the other towns we're doing and. But I think that's fairly, fairly important that we, we do. If we have it next. Tuesday, if there's a normal council meeting or. Any, that not work for anybody is would be my question. Go ahead.
It's just a question. Now, when you're talking about zoning, what are you gonna, are.
Identify yourself.
Play it live.
Thank you.
Okay.
For the record.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, are you gonna look at some of the areas on that, that have been considered that. They're in the zoning area that says privately owned undeveloped?
Well, I think we're gonna look at everything.
Because I know that that's one area that, that does need to be put there.
Sure.
No. Because it's not undeveloped property any longer, it has been developed for a long time.
Yeah, I, I. Yeah, I I think, yeah, no, no.
Was included.
Yeah, yes, yeah, I said, I think we, yeah, I didn't take, but I think we need to look at a lot of things, yes.
What did you say again?
Uh, next Tuesday is the first, the first February first. Yeah, work for everything. Yes. We need to start on some of this before we should get into our budgets, because once we get on our budget, I'll be taking up a lot of spare time.
Do we have any preliminary information from Jim Gores yet on that, that property on? Layout of how it's gonna be planned, you know, are we gonna talk about that, about size of acres or what, sell, sell it or? Or just looking at zoning, it's all gonna be horse property. I'm just looking, do we, can we bring us more information, is it available?
There's, I, we have some, a little bit of information, if I'm. I need to have us, if we're gonna get, we may need. Okay, one thing, we need the information for the for the platting and everything on our forty acres. We got some initial information, some initial elevations, I've had our crew go out there with our. With their excavator and digged out, looking, see where bedrock is, so we can, some more, a little more information on looking at sewer lines and stuff like that. If we. Due to the, or the elevations, I know the surveyors and cores are working a little bit. They're working together to try to see what that's gonna look like, but that's gonna be. That first forty acres is all gonna be houses, housing, now, on the outside of that, we haven't done. We haven't really went and done much or anything there.
Okay.
But it's because we haven't. We would have spent some more money. You know, so we got initially, but yeah, I'm, we're, we're thinking the plan is that it's gonna be some sort of. I don't know exactly, we may come up with a new zone that we don't have or how that's gonna be zone, but sort of. Or the plan was for people to have animals. Or whatever out there, but we'll have to have rules and regulations for that also. On what would, what would be allowed, and that'll be for us to cut, sort of come up with, you know.
Let me see what time, sorry.
Seven o'clock, seven, seven o'clock. Normal council meeting.
That's what I figured, but.
And then we'll try not to. Drawing, not as long as our council, but keeping.
Hopefully, I'll get the thing unplugged and plugged back in, so it works, I apologize, but.
But I, I think that's a, that's a, something we should, we need, need to look at. And then like Leah brought up, that's, we got, we got other issues in town.
I need one of those.
Best weekend. Matter of fact, I will send all that out in an email, is that okay?
Anybody else have anything they want to bring up? Nothing being, have a motion to adjourn. Oh shit, can I get a second? Motion by Councilman Weaver, second by Councilman Hartkey that we adjourn this meeting, she showed me Town Council in favor, say aye.